Council to order. Our invocation this evening is my chaplain Steve Gray, Virginia Beach Police Department, First Precinct. After the invocation, if everybody will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Go me for a word of prayer, please. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight on this, what is a beautiful, beautiful day. Lord, thank you for the leadership that you have provided to this great city. We thank you, Father, for the dedication of these members. We thank you for their families and their willingness to lend them to us for so many hours every month. We pray, Father, for your blessings on this meeting tonight. We pray that it will be cordial. We pray that it will be informative. We pray that you will allow us to accomplish much. And we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Do you have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All present, with the exception of Ms. Wilson, who's out of town for vacation, and Mr. Dyer, who's ill.
Thank you. May I have a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Vote is open. May I have a motion to approve the informal session minutes of August 21st, 2018, and the special formal session of August 28th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, our secondary is not here.
That was a reluctant second.
Mr. Jones, may I have your vote?
Bobby doing that?
Aye.
By a vote of seven to zero, with Mr. Earn abstaining, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
If I can clarify that, I was abstaining for the informal formal session of August 21st, but I'm voting in favor of the special formal session on August 28th, since I was absent on the 21st.
Mr. Ma.
And I'm just the reverse. I left early on the 28th at 5:15, so I can certify as of that date, but since it's longer than I abstain, because I left early.
Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we are very fortunate this evening to have some special guests with us from Virginia Wesleyan University. And Dr. Scott Miller, Dr. Miller, is here. Tina Hill here, Director of Intercollegiate Athletics. Brandon Elliott is here as head softball coach. And Jenna Wilson is also here as the assistant coach. I don't see a hand, but there he is. And then we have with us this evening, and I'd like for these persons to come forward, if they will, please. Kaitlyn Biondo.
You can just stand right here.
Hope Burleson. Madison Globke. Carla Hall. Hannah Hall. Amy Large. Kirsten Richardson. Carrigan Simpson. Julia Sennett. Danielle Stewart. Maria Weddle. And Amanda Archer and Elena Peters here. I have to note, they might not be here tonight. Well, we certainly do welcome you to Virginia Beach City Council. We're honored to have you with us this evening. And I have a resolution that I'd like to read. The resolution reads, whereas Virginia Wesleyan University, founded in Virginia Beach, is Virginia Beach's oldest higher education institution, Virginia Wesleyan University is the only Virginia Beach-based institution bringing NCAA national championships to the city. Having won the 2006 men's basketball championship, the 2017 and 2018 softball championship in 2000-- championship. In 2016, Evan Cox Warren won the NCAA individual golf championship. Is that right? Is that supposed to be men's? Is that correct, Dr. Miller?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Whereas the Virginia Wesleyan University softball team claimed its second NCAA Division III national championship in 2018, only three other softball teams in the Division III history have taken home back-to-back national championships. The team boasted a record of 55-3, setting an NCAA Division III record for wins in a season, breaking their 54-win record from the year before. And whereas the team consisted of eight all-conference members, three all-region members, and a pair of All-American recipients, Senior Cassidy Howard was named a first-team All-American for the third time in her career, as well as the Virginia-- VASID State Player of the Year, as her 136 walks set the NCAA record for career bases on balls. Softball pitcher Hannah Hall was named the NCAA Division III Player of the Year for the second straight season, as she led the nation in both strikeouts and victories. And whereas finishing his 11th year as a head coach, Brandon Elliott currently holds a record of 408 to 103, putting his winning percentage among the top four in all of the NCAA Division III. Tabbed as the Old Dominion Athletic Conference, ODAC, I'm not sure what that is, but-- and VASID Coach of the Year, Elliott and his staff were named the 2018 National Coaching Staff of the Year as well. Elliott has produced nine ODAC Pitchers of the Year and six ODAC Players of the Year. And whereas, the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association ranked Virginia Wesleyan number one through the entirety of the season, and the team has not relinquished that position for 21 straight weeks, dating back to midway through the 2017 season. Now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pauses in its deliberations this fourth day of September 2018 to recognize these star athletes and coaches for their talent, skill, tenacity, and leadership on the sports field that will assist throughout their life in becoming professional leaders of tomorrow. Be it further resolved that all 450,000 citizens in the greatest city in the world join us in declaring September 4th, 2018, Virginia Wesleyan University Softball Team Day, and signed by all members of the City Council. Congratulations. We're very proud to have you here with us this evening, and we're very proud of you as members of our community and members of the university in the city of Virginia Beach. Thank you so much for being here. Why would you like to take this resolution?
Where's the pitcher?
Who's the team captain?
Who's the team captain? It doesn't matter. Thank you very much for coming.
Can I just want to come up? Ben stood up.
You want to do rabbit ears, Ben?
They could Photoshop you.
Thank you for praying.
Wow.
I'd like to see him play, I bet you tell.
Pretty significant.
I now declare public hearing on, first, the acquisition of agricultural land preservation, ARP easement, 3,600 block of Charity Neck Road, and 1,700 block of Pleasant Ridge Road.
There are no speakers, sir.
All right. Also, a public hearing on polling place changes, A, Red Wing Precinct, Sea-Tac Elementary School.
There are no speakers under the public hearing.
And B, Trantwood Precinct, to Trantwood Elementary School.
No speakers under the public hearing.
All right. We'll now go to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval on the consent agenda the following items. Item J1, resolution authorize a contract between the Virginia Beach Community Services Board and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Item J2, ordinances to amend the city code. Item A, Section 7-66, Ray designation of city highways for golf cart operation in Asheville Park and Chesapeake Bay east of North Hampton Boulevard. Item J3, ordinance to extend the date to satisfy the conditions, Ray closing a portion of Euclid Road adjacent to 5073 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Item J4, ordinance to authorize the acquisition of an agricultural land preservation easement from Robert W. White Jr. et al., 113.07 plus or minus acres at the 3,600 block of Charity Neck Road and the 1,700 block of Pleasant Ridge Road, noting that Mr. Moss is voting no on that item. Item J5, ordinance to authorize the temporary encroachment into a portion of city property known as Croatan Beach at the rear of 536 South Atlantic Avenue, Ray construct and maintain timber beach access. Item J8, ordinance to accept and appropriate an additional $12,460 grant funds, Ray victim-witness program to the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. Item J9, ordinance to appropriate $200,000 of fund balance from the Sheriff's Office Special Revenue Fund to the Sheriff's FY 2018-19 operating budget regarding replacement of kitchen equipment. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of seven to zero, with-- can you close it? With Mr. Davenport having stepped out and noting Mr. Moss's nay vote on the ARP, you've approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
All right. Our first item. Let me read our policy, if I may. I want to remind everyone that City Council Speaker Policy, that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes, applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. We don't have any planning items, so we won't go over that. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for the individuals who have signed up to speak first. After those have signed up to speak, have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. These-- but those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, an address, and telephone numbers for the clerk to record. The first item is Item J2B, which is Section 10-1, Ray polling location changes for Red Wing Precinct to Sea-Tac Elementary School and Trantwood Precinct to Trantwood Elementary School.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
I strongly object to the City Council. There's several members of council who are running for reelection and running for new offices, and I don't understand why. These polling places are being changed approximately two months before the elections. One of them's mine, which I don't appreciate. It's already been changed two times. Okay. This meeting's on the first day of school. It could easily have been changed. There are a lot of people that couldn't attend today, teachers, bus drivers, kids, their parents. Okay. This brings up the conflicts of interest. As far as people voting, I'm sure you're aware that, you know, there's been letters to Stolli, our Commonwealth attorney, and to Mark Herring on conflicts of interest. So I'm asking that this be deferred. The full agenda wasn't even published until Monday. So most people were on vacation. A lot of people aren't even aware. And I did notify several people that are running, but nobody seemed to-- most of the candidates haven't shown up. I'll wait and speak on the next item. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, any other speakers on the first item?
There are none signed up.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in a discussion. Not the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you've approved the ordinance changing the polling location.
Next item is Item 2C, under Ordinances and Resolutions, Section 21-230, Ray designation of Mediterranean Avenue between Virginia Beach Boulevard and Norfolk Avenue to the traffic calming ordinance.
Barbara Messner.
There were many items on the full agenda. It was 133 pages. I assume the traffic calming is more of slowing down traffic. We already have gridlock. This is in, like, the vibe, oceanfront district, everything that you're rezoning. And as stated, I think there's major conflicts with the people who are voting. The letter I wrote to-- and I need to make-- remind people that Mark Stiles can only give opinions, and he cannot give legal rulings. But for most of the votes that y'all give, when you do and don't abstain, they're by your employees' opinion, not a legal ruling. And Kevin Stolli, I asked him on February 16th for conflict on eight people. Sesams is no longer here. And I ask about the Owls Creek supermajority votes, the Pier Project supermajority votes, the Dome Wave Project supermajority votes, which is now the Fieldhouse Sports Center, as they pertain to Mayor Sesams, Louis Jones, John Yern, Rosemary Wilson, Jim Wood, Shannon Kane, Ben Davenport, and Barbara Henley. Most of these have been posted, but especially-- anyone who has ties. How many people here have ties to Town Bank? Town Bank Finance is almost everything. So people that have loans, mortgages, checking accounts, everything with Town Bank, that's a little bit of a conflict. These are-- Kevin Stolli, who recused himself during the Will Sesams investigation because he admitted he had a conflict, he gave-- told Will Sesams on January-- on December 1st, 2015, February 20th, 2015, and January 20th, 2016, that he could use the opinions, not legal rulings. So we have a major problem. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance regarding traffic calming.
Next item is Item J6, which is ordinance to establish capital improvement program, Ray EMS Headquarters audiovisual upgrades and transfer $250,000 from the Housing Resource Center. It was deferred from August 21st, 2018.
Barbara Messner.
And I hope if there's anyone watching and paying attention, you know, none of the candidates show up very much. And Mr. Jones, you're usually really good with running the meetings and allowing people to speak, but when Tim Wirth came running up and screaming last time, he wasn't on the agenda, you still let him speak. But on this particular item, this is 250,000 that you're taking from the Housing Resource Center that still isn't open, and 167,000 from the Housing Resource Center, which hasn't opened. You're going to close it Thursday, and there's no firm date for opening or operating the Housing Resource Center for the homeless. So that's almost a half a million, 417,000, that you're transferring, one for audiovisual services and the other for EMS. And we should have public funding for public safety. And the other one's going to the farmer's market, so I just don't think y'all are being fiscally responsible with their money. And Mr. Moss, you've admitted before that once the budgets are passed, we shouldn't be transferring money and moving it from one thing to the other, so. And like I said, if everyone had-- their Facebook's open to everyone, I'm not the only one, we could ask y'all questions. I had a lot of questions I would have liked to have asked prior to tonight's meeting. So, thank you.
That's all the speaker on that item.
May I have a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance to transfer funds to EMS.
The next item is Item J7, which is ordinance to transfer $167,166 from the Housing Resource Center, CIP, to the various buildings rehabilitation and renewal for CIP, Ray electrical upgrades to the farmer's market deferred from August 21st, 2018.
Ms. Messner.
I already included that in the 417,000 approximately that you're transferring. And I believe, Mr. Moss, you said that-- I forgot the reason you weren't here before, but I was told that one reason that you left early was because you attended one of the candidate forums. I listened very carefully, and I appreciate Mr. Davenport telling me why you didn't come back to the meeting. So thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the ordinance to transfer funds to the farmer's market.
Now I ask the Vice Mayor to make the nominations for appoint.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, nominate the following individuals for boards and commissions. Community Services Board, Gail Coulson. For Housing Advisory Board, Ann Crenshaw. Old Beach Design Review Committee, Nancy Parker. Public Library Board, Helena Gordine Thorpe, Mamie Johnson, Kyra Williams, Neely Gahan, Thomas Zimmerman. For the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Chris Brown, Myron Nara, and Rob Eul. For the Wetlands Board, Stephen Ballard and James Vale.
Are there any further nominations?
We have a speaker. We have one speaker signed up for appointments. Barbara Messner.
There are major conflicts with Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority. Ms. Henley, you received a letter from one of your constituents about the lack of money being made on the town center. I think the debt at the time was approximately 94 million since that, you know, TIF project had started, and I don't believe you replied to that. The Economic Development Authority really hasn't made money, and it uses taxpayer money to fund private projects and developers, including Aldi's, Lidl's, 7-Elevens. I think some people here have oil stocks, so voting on 7-Elevens should be abstained. A lot of people don't bother to abstain. And no one on council was appointed themselves this time, but I don't think councils should be appointing themselves to appointments and liaisons, because for the arena deal, Jim Wood and Davenport, who aren't here, they were both appointed, and Moss, you voluntarily helped out promoting the arena deal for four years. So I wish there were more people that were involved. Thank you.
Are there any further nominations? The vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have appointed those as read by the Vice Mayor.
Is there any unfinished business? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I believe there are two Girl Scouts in the audience.
Would they please come forward?
No. Oh, wait. They're looking at me like they're not, so I might be incorrect.
There might be a Boy Scout in the back.
Well, welcome in.
They're wearing green, so I thought they were Girl Scouts.
We're glad to have them here with us this evening. All right.
I think they're coming up.
I think there's a Boy Scout in the back right corner.
Beg pardon?
I think there might be a Boy Scout. Is that a Boy-- yep.
I think the girls are coming up.
Oh, good.
Oh, there you go. Would you give us your names?
I'm Mollup Shaw. My name is Madison Johnson.
All right. Well, thank you for being here with us this evening, and would you come forward? I want to give you a pen.
And there was a Boy Scout right back there.
The other Boy Scout is here.
There he is. All right.
Here he comes.
What's your troop?
996.
All righty.
Would you give us your name?
Davis. Davis.
David? All right, David. What's your last name?
Clute.
Okay. Well, welcome to our Virginia Beach City Council. We're glad you came. And if you'll come forward, I'll give you a pen that you can take and also wear on your uniform.
Is this citizenship and community or communications?
Communications.
All right. Outstanding.
Great. Is there any new business? If not, I will adjourn the meeting.